It is six o'clock on May 23rd, 2022, and I'm calling this Chelmsford Select Board meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge? Okay. First up, we have our public service announcements, and the first one is the proclamation for Memorial Day. Would you like to read it, Ken?
Sure. The town of Chelmsford is issuing this proclamation in recognition of Memorial Day, May 30th, 2022, whereas Memorial Day, May 30th, 2022, has been set aside as the annual day of remembrance for those men and women who served our nation during times of conflict as members of the armed forces, and whereas we pause this day to especially remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice of their lives to defend the freedom of all Americans, and whereas we honor the service and sacrifice of all veterans of all wars and conflicts, and join the living veterans of the town of Chelmsford in expressing our gratitude to their fallen comrades. Now, therefore, we, the Chelmsford Select Board, to hereby proclaim Monday, May 30th, 2022, as Memorial Day, 2022, and join all residents of the town in recognizing the deceased veterans of Chelmsford on this solemn day. This proclamation is signed the 23rd day of May, 2022, by the town clerk, Pat Duris, and the Board of, uh, the Select Board members.
And we have Regina Jackson accepting the proclamation.
Thank you very much. Um, I would just, Regina Jackson, and I would just like to tell everybody about our, the Chelmsford Memorial Day observance for this year. Uh, the American Legion Post 313 up in North Chelmsford is the host post. So, we will have a parade starting on, on next Monday, which is May 30th. The step-off is at 10:00 a.m. from the American Legion Post 313, which is at 90 Groton Road. So, we will proceed down Groton Road, around Vinyl Square, and then we will, and at Vinyl Square, we will have a program. And as part of the program this year, we're going to rededicate the Vietnam Veterans Memorial up in Vinyl Square. So, everybody is welcome to join us. Um, and after the program, the North Town Hall will be open for the community for ice cream and cake. And, um, the other, the only other thing about, well, one other thing about Memorial Day is the, in Chelmsford, we have six public cemeteries, and all veterans' graves will be marked, will be, the flags will be up. Most of them are already up, but they'll all be up before Memorial Day. So, everybody's welcome. So, hopefully, we'll see everybody next Monday. If you would like, if you're a Boy Scout, Girl Scout troop, you'd like to be in the parade, part of the parade, just assemble by 9:30 on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Next, we have the Pride Month proclamation, and receiving that is Latasha Dixon, who is the Chair of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
So, the town of Chelmsford is issuing this proclamation in recognition of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, June 2022. Whereas, the town of Chelmsford is welcoming community in an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, and raise a family, and whereas Chelmsford recognizes the importance of equity and freedom, whereas the nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that includes that each person has been created equal, that each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of law, and whereas the town of Chelmsford lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community are a vital part of all fields and professions and contribute to a stronger community, and whereas the town of Chelmsford is dedicating to fostering acceptance of all its citizens in preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity, and whereas Chelmsford is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities in its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our town, and whereas the Centers of Disease Control recognizes that LGBTQ teens are at a higher risk to be victims of violence and have increased suicide rates, and whereas it is imperative that the young people in the community, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board, and on behalf of the town of Chelmsford, hereby proclaiming and recognizing 2022, June 2022, as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month in the town of Chelmsford, and urge citizens to recognize and celebrate the contributions made by members of the LGBT community and to actively promote the principles of equity and liberty. Signed this 23rd day of May, 2022, by the town clerk, Pat Duris, and the Select Board.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Latasha Dixon, and on behalf of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, I would like to thank the town of Chelmsford and the Select Board for signing this proclamation. This proclamation was first signed back in 2019, and it's been signed annually, and we really appreciate what you're doing and what you're saying and your actions to the LGBT+ community. Last week, we had a listening session, and the community residents came out, and they spoke about what they would like to see and hear and feel in Chelmsford, and this supports that in many of the things that they said. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Latasha. Okay. Next up, we have the walking group.
So, the walking group, the Health Department welcomes you to join us as we walk on the Bruce Friedman Rail Trail. The walking group is every second and fourth Tuesday of May through September. They start at 9:00 a.m. and end at 9:30 a.m. They meet at the 110 Ballfields at the intersection of Fletcher Street and Chelmsford Street. It is a great way to get involved in your, uh, it's a great way to get in your 30 minutes of exercise, socialize, and learn. A new public health topic is discussed each time they do a walk. Please wear comfortable and weather-appropriate clothing and bring a water bottle. Um, if it's inclement weather, they do not meet. If you have any questions or concerns, please reach out to Darcy or Amanda at the Chelmsford Health Department at 978-250-5241.
The Master Plan Implementation Committee?
So, do you want me to read the whole thing, or can I just summarize?
No, just announce.
All right. So, the, um, the Chelmsford Planning Board is seeking to appoint one town meeting rep or resident-at-large to the 2020 Master Plan Implementation Committee. The committee is expected to meet no more than quarterly. If you're interested in filling this role, um, there are links on the town website for the master plan presentation, the final draft of the 2020 master plan you can read, uh, and learn about. There's a letter to the residents, um, that you can look at. Um, and the role of the Master Planning Committee is to alert receptive boards or departments of the recommendations included in the master plan, um, and not to enforce or engage in the actual implementation of the recommendations. Gather results and findings of the respective parties in order to keep the master plan recommendations updated, and periodically report back to the planning board on the progress of the implementation of the recommendations of the master plan. If you're interested in serving on the 2020 Master Plan Implementation Committee, please submit a letter of interest on the later than Friday, May 27th, 2022, including the relevant experience to Evan Belansky, Director of Community Development, and his email is E.B.E.L.A.N.S.K.Y@chelmsfordMA.gov, and it's E.Belansky@chelmsfordMA.gov.
Thank you, Ken. Next, we have the market on the common.
So, Chelms-
Jen Melanson's on the call. Is that why she's there? Jen, are you on the call for the market on the common? Maybe not. Okay. Sorry. There she is. She just popped.
I am not. Um, I'm just here as an observer, but I can speak to it if you'd like.
Sure.
Sorry. Sorry.
So, yes, uh, this season, the farmer's market, a farmer's market will be returning to, um, the Chelmsford Common. Uh, we haven't had a market for two years because of the pandemic. So, and we've expanded from, um, a simple farmer's market to a crafters and makers market as well. So, we will have, um, you know, home bakers, um, and crafters, um, along with local farmers. Everything, um, will be locally sourced and produced. We start up this Saturday, excuse me, it will run every Saturday on the common from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. with the exception of the July 4th weekend. Um, we are giving way to the common for July 4th festivities that weekend, um, but otherwise, 19 weeks during the season through Columbus Day weekend, um, and we are still actively seeking vendors, um, both farmers and crafters. So, anyone interested can contact me. Um, my information is on the website, and all the information on the, um, market is also on the town website under my Community Services page.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, Ken, and next up, we have the center listening session. Oh, I'm sorry, the memory cafe.
So, you're invited to a mindful moment hosted by the Purple Hydrangea Dementia Care Consultation with Chelmsford Council on Aging and Chelmsford Booster Club. We welcome tho-, we welcome those living with all levels of memory loss and their care partner to connect, socialize, and grow their support circle with dementia-friendly guided activities. Walk-ins are welcome, but we encourage you to save your spot by calling 978-251-0533. Uh, they're being held June 6th from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. at 75 Groton Road, North Chelmsford, and just, uh, notes, shout-out to KJ's Cafe for donating the refreshments for this event.
Thank you, Ken. Now, we have the center listening session.
So, the Select Board will be hosting a listening session for improvements around the town common, or the town center overall. Um, this will be held at the Center for Arts, the CCA, the big yellow Old Town Hall building right off the common. Uh, on Monday, June 13th, at 6:00 p.m., you're invited to attend this listening section, session, and share your thoughts regarding improvements around the town center. The board's goal is to develop ideas for improving community areas from the town common through North Road and Historic District. This includes the consideration of modification, modifications to improve event audio experiences, landscape, parking, the brook walk, and the sa-, the center vacant parcel. All are welcome.
Thank you, Ken. Um, next up, we have public input. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public input? Just come up to the podium. We need your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Kachufus. I am a resident of the town of Littleton. However, I am a Chelmsford firefighter. I've been on the department for 18 years. Um, I'd like to speak on, um, and I promise I won't go as long as I did at the listening session, but, um, anyhow, I, I'd like to speak on, uh, the flag policy discussion that's coming up. I, I think that the Select Board has an opportunity here and a path forward, um, that was contained in, in the very well-written logical letter written by Attorney Haverty, um, regarding the flag policy, um, and especially comparing it to our situation compared to the city of Boston's situation, the Shert left case, and, and the, the Supreme Court ruling that was unanimous. Um, I believe that the path forward for the town should be to allow the flying of banners, the flying of bunting. Um, I wouldn't necessarily personally want to put a flag up a flagpole, um, but I don't see the harm in hanging bunting on the town common. Um, I understand that there are issues in regards to freedom of speech issues, but I think that was addressed in, in the attorney's letter, as the government has a right to free speech as well. If the government approves a proclamation, that is government speech, and the government can and should approve cases that, you know, are in the public's best interest. Um, you know, fully 10% of the population is LGBT, and that, those are the people that we know that are out. 80% of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the voters of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, support legalized marriage equality, support legalized LGBTQ rights. And if we're a town that puts forward how great this town is, and this town is a great place to live, a great, it's where I grew up, um, I think that, that allowing the flying of flags, um, is a logical next step, not only for this, but when you talk about a celebration like Juneteenth, I'd like to see something, I'd like to see a flag flying for Juneteenth. I would like to see a flag flying for the Armenian genocide, for Irish heritage.
One minute.
Yep. And, um, that's, that is all I have tonight, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during public input? Anyone in the Zoom room? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to committee vacancies.
So, for the week of May 23rd, 2022, we have the following vacancies available, looking to be filled. The Arts and Technology Education Fund has one three-year term. Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. CCA Advisory Committee is looking to fill two one-year, uh, terms. Community Action Committee, uh, Program Committee, two seats available. Those are one-year terms. Council on Aging, two unexpired three-year seats, and five associate member positions. Cultural Council has two three-year terms. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee has one unexpired three-year term. Holiday Decorating Committee has two one-year terms. Parade Committee, all applicants welcome to one-year terms ending each July 31st. Public Celebrations Committee are five one-year terms. Recycling Committee is looking to fill one seat. It's a one-year term. Tree Committee has one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. If you're interested in serving on any of these boards, um, or committees, please complete an online application available on the town website, or you can find more information by contacting the town manager's office here at 50 Villa Rica Road, Chelmsford, Mass, or, uh, you can email TM Office, that's Town Manager Office, so TMOffice@chelmsfordMA.gov, or call the office at 978-250-5202.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, so our next segment is for licenses, and the first is the entertainment license for Max and Leo's. Do we have anyone here representing Max and Leo's? Looks like we have Willie in the, let's see if I can unmute you. There we go.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Bill Costa. I'm the manager for Max and Leo's over on Boston Road.
Okay. Is there anything you want to say about what you, what you want to do, or?
Uh, sure. Uh, so, we are, uh, simply looking to offer, uh, very low-volume acoustic background music. Um, initially, we're targeting, like, potentially, like, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, um, evenings, uh, towards the end of our dinner service.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, would it be inside or outside?
So, initially, we would, we were considering keeping it inside. If possible, if, if it be possible, we'd like to have it on our outdoor patio on certain nights, um, to be ending at a, at the designated time, but before the designated time.
Okay, and what's the designated time for?
Yeah, there's no time in here.
I think per the license, it's no later than 10:00 p.m. And currently, uh, we don't stay open later than 10:00 p.m., and we don't, we don't plan on being overly, open later than 10:00 p.m. Um...
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I guess if we have complaints, we'll, we'll know about it from the, you know, nearby residents, because there are some residents-
Library.
Well, yeah, library's not open that late, so they might appreciate it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
So, we just need to, this is a-
Do you, it's not a public hearing. Do we need to put the 10:00 p.m. in the motion, since it's not in the paperwork?
Can we do that, or?
Well, I mean, they close at 10:00.
They close at 10:00, so, yeah, I think it's fine. They can't stay past there.
I mean, at that point, it's not his problem if the guy plays his guitar past 10:00. All right, so I would make a motion, uh, to approve adding an entertainment license to the all alcohol beverage license for Paxton 20 LLC, who's doing business as Max and Leo's, at the 20 Boston Road, um, building.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and next up, we have the one-day all-alcoholic beverages license for the American Legion. Is there anyone here from the American Legion? Okay. Does, does the board have any questions or comments that would hold us back from taking action this evening? Oh, Mary, are you from the American Legion? Nope? Okay.
So, I will-
I just have a question. I, it's too bad we don't have somebody here. I know they usually do this in August and not in June, and I wondered if they were also planning to do it in August.
Yeah, this is an event for the High School Alumni Association.
That's what the one in August usually is, too.
Right, but they crossed out August and wrote June on one of the pages, so I think it's-
But if, I've seen on Facebook that somebody is saying it's going to be in August, or gonna be in August.
Well, this license is going to be for June 25th, so they'll have to come back if they want it in August.
I think Pat's just wondering if they're going to do another event.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. Take a motion.
Okay, once again, so I will make a motion to approve the one-day all-alcohol beverage license for the fundraiser on behalf of the Chelmsford High School Alumni Association be held on June 25th, 2022, in conjunction with the block party at the parking lot at the American Legion at 90 Groton Road.
Second. My second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. Uh, yeah, uh, no, this is Chelmsford Water District, so you're okay.
It's just Chelmsford?
Yeah, it's not North Chelmsford.
All right. Sorry.
You can walk out if you want, George.
Really?
Paul, I'll let you introduce this one.
We're joined this evening by Commissioner John Harrington, and, as well as Andy Reed, the superintendent, and Todd Melanson, who is the environmental compliance officer. Pretty good. And I, who's making the presentation, Andy? Okay, great.
It's been a few years, because of COVID, since they've come in and provided us with an update in May, but, uh, I'm sure the wait will be worth it.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Uh, as Paul said, my, I am Andy Reed. I'm the water superintendent, and I apologize, I'm kind of on the side here, because I kind of have to see the presentation. So, if I hit the next slide, is the, I don't know who's controlling the slides.
I am.
So, every year, we try to do an overview of the district, and it's really just to give you an introduction to us. Uh, I know that, uh, we're a quasi municipal, so we're part of the town, so it's a smaller government that was voted in, in the turn of the last century. Uh, May, historically, has been drinking water week. Uh, we were trying to do it earlier in May, but it didn't work out, so we're here at the end of May. Uh, Chelmsford's been blessed with a fair amount of water, uh, and it's very good water quality, and if you've been watching the news, uh, you know the West is not so lucky. Um, so, we'll kind of get into that a little bit more of how that benefits the town. So, next slide, please. So, the district, district was set up by an act of the Acts of the Legislature in 1913, uh, and the primary purpose of the district was really fire protection. Um, it has since evolved into safe drinking water. Uh, so, back in the turn of the last century, if you will, we've, we had fires, and the business said, "We need a community water system," and so that's what was developed. So, next slide, please. Uh, the district management, it's governed by, uh, elected officials, a board of three water commissioners. Uh, that would be Bill Martin, who's chairman, Ron Wentmore, vice chairman, and John Harrington, assistant treasurer. Uh, and those gentlemen have been serving for many, many years, and have been, um, a cornerstone of the community, if you will. Uh, the local heads are Lisa Quattrali, who's the business manager, and she's on the left there in the picture, as well as myself, although that's Bob Delaney in the picture. I thought he looked much better than me, so we kept that picture. Uh, commissioners are there, as well as legal counsel. Uh, the district consists of 20 wells. Uh, we service about 8,500 service connections in town. Uh, average demand is about 2.6 million gallons per day, and next week, we'll probably hit about 5 MGD. That's usually our peak. Uh, we provide water to almost 29,000 people in the, the town. Uh, and as you can see here, there are actually three districts where the white portion, North Chelmsford's the north, and East Chelmsford is the, uh, blue, if you will. Uh, so, what used to be known as center districts, um, provides the most water to the town, and we support the town's goals and efforts as you develop. So, next slide, please. So, the district is a partner with the, the town. Uh, there's many things that we do for the town, and there's many things that the town does for us. Um, some examples are the district reads, uh, about 2,700 meters monthly, and we supply those readings to the sewer department, and the sewer department bills from those meter readings. So, we maintain those meters, uh, at no cost to the town. Um, we have about 100, 1,500 hydrants, uh, as well as five storage tanks, uh, that provide fire protection. And unlike some other districts in this Commonwealth, we provide, uh, that service with no fire readiness fee. Um, so if you go to the next slide. Um, the district assists the town with snow plowing. Uh, so, as you have big events, we'll send guys out to help with the DPW, and the town assists us with vegetation management. So, you have some equipment that we don't have, so we'll reach out to the town, and you'll help us mow and keep our, uh, wells, uh, free of vegetation. The district supports the town with growth, and then vice versa. The town has been very helpful for us as we look for land and water supplies in town. Um, the district provides electric signs, uh, for town meeting, uh, and the town incorporates water liens for us. So, if we have someone who doesn't pay a water bill, uh, the town actually helps us at no cost to obtain those funds as a lien. Um, in the town and the district, we generally try to work together with grants, as well as planning documents. MVP is one that I know that, uh, you've put in long-term plans for, and we try to give you input on what the water needs are, so that you can position yourself for those grants, and vice versa. Next slide. So, the district has, uh, several challenges that are coming up. Uh, one that we get a lot of input on is the State's Water Management Act. So, the Water Management Act dictates how much water that we can pump out of the ground of the wells that we have. Uh, and what's kind of unique about that is right now, it's somewhat prescriptive. So, it was meant to be an environmental protection, uh, and now, if you see us put signs, you can have a rainy summer like we had last year, and we still have to put those signs out. Um, so, it's a way for people to understand that the water is not limitless, um, and I think in time, we'll see that Water Management Act progress and evolve. So, that's one of the challenges that we have. Next slide, please. Uh, we've all heard about PFOS, so we do have PFOS in all our wells. It's varying degrees, uh, and we have exceeded the limit at the Cricket Springs Water Treatment Plant. Um, so, we are going to be putting treatment on that, uh, facility, and possibly at Riverneck in the near future. And now, PFOS is something that's found in everything, uh, anything that's waterproof is PFOS. So, if you have a bag of popcorn, if you have pizza, if you have a t-shirt, if you have Scotts Guard, it's all PFOS. Uh, so, that's showing up in our drinking water, and what they found is that bioaccumulates and be can, become a cancerous compound to the human body. So, we're working towards, uh, removing that from the drinking water. Now, that all comes at a cost, so we'll talk about that in a few minutes. So, next slide, please. Another challenge we have is most of the distribution system was put in in 1950, 1960. So, we have many water breaks. We have upwards of 30- So we have many water breaks, we have upwards of 30 or 40 water main breaks a year. So not only is that lost water, but that's, provides interruption to the customers, and basically what we need to do is we need to start putting renewal in the system. So recently, if you've ever seen one of your water bills, you'll see that there's an infrastructure fee, and part of that infrastructure fee is trying to gear us to putting upwards of $2 or $3 million a year eventually into the distribution system for pipe replacement. So that's a big, big need. The distribution system is about 200 miles, and that's about a $300 million asset that the town and district owns. I can imagine that's a big nut. Next slide, please. So, we also have regulations that are being revised, so there's existing regulations out there for water quality, like the lead and copper rule, like the stage two disinfection byproduct rule. So what happens is as those get revised, they become more stringent, and so the state and feds are making us do more and more, just like you have with stormwater right now. So that's been a big need in town. The district will be facing these in the next three to five years. So what does that all mean? That means there are some financial needs that are coming, we are looking to leverage the funding that's out there, and as you're all aware, the Biden administration has put a lot of money into this thing called the bill, which is the building infrastructure law, which is interesting, it's called the bill. Unfortunately, for the district and all water utilities, that's going to go through SRF, it's the state revolving fund. So what that is, is that's a loan. So the district, when we put PFOS in and everyone thinks that we're getting money for free, well, that's not true, what we're getting is likely a low interest loan, which is going to be like 0% probably, the portion that's forgiven, which is maybe upwards of 20%, but the rest of that has to be paid back. So that's all going to happen in the water rates eventually, so. These other rules all keep kind of piling on. So we're in the same boat as the sewer, if you want to use that example. So next slide. So where's the district going? So to give you a little initiatives, the district has started a valve maintenance program, so we have a lot of broken valves, and we're trying to address those to make sure that the system is up to snuff, and is workable when we need to isolate the system. Also, eventually, we'll be doing a unidirectional flushing program, so we got a grant from the state to do an asset management, provided about 50% of what that project is going to cost. The good thing about that is what it does is it cleans the pipes, all right? So if you have any pipes that have ironum or corroding, we can flush that out. But what happens is, since we haven't done it for a long time, the first couple of times we do it, we're going to have a lot of, a lot of complaints. So I talked to Christie over at DPW, and I said, when we get there, we'll be working with you, because it's a good chance you're going to get a lot of those complaints too, because they don't know who to call. So that's coming down the pike. Next slide, please. Main replacement, which I touched upon, so here's a picture of one of our earlier mains that were installed in 1913, as you can see, OSHA did not exist in 1913, so hopefully it did whatever we wanted. Next slide, please. The district has 20 wells, but we're looking to diversify those wells, so what happens is, we don't necessarily have all the redundancy we'd like to have, so the town was kind enough to work with us to sell Misty Meadows, and we're working towards hopefully a bedrock well. Hopefully it will be, we're not sure, but hopefully we'll produce enough water that that well would be viable. One thing that we're finding is, there's no new property, they're not making property anymore, so that's becoming a challenge for the district as we look for one or two other wells, there's not many places where we can put them. So we're looking at those alternatives, as well as some others. So next slide, please. PFOS, and I talked about that, so we do have PFOS at Cricket Springs, so we do have to remove that, and we'll also be looking at that possibly at Riverneck, so that's a discussion being had now. Next slide. So in the end, what we'd like to say is, the town has been very helpful to us, and we've been hopefully very cooperative with the town, we think the relationship's been very good, we see you as critical to our successful operations, hopefully you see us the same way. We look forward to continuing that positive working relationship where we can, and hopefully this gives you a better feel for who we are in town and what we're trying to do. So if you have any questions, I'll take those, otherwise I'll let you go for the evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, Paul.
Yeah, members of the board, we're joined this evening by Mary Flandez-Acardi from UMass Boston, who helped, helping the town address one of the select boards and managers' goals for the year, which is succession planning, and Mary's on the screen this evening. She worked with my assistant Steve Maffetone and Human Resources Director Jean Parziale to, you know, reach out into the departments and get, and get a better understanding of the needs and challenges for the community, and so she has a report for you this evening, a PowerPoint, as well as a detailed report that's in your package. So with that as inter, I'll turn it over to Mary. Good afternoon, Mary, good evening.
Hi, how y'all doing this evening? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Okay, great, great. So happy to be here, Colin sent us a thrill to work with the town again, and we appreciate all the support we had from Steve and Jeannie and all the department heads that we were able to meet with. So what I thought I would do is, I know that you're tight on time, I would go through a few quick slides, and then briefly go through the report, I know you've had it to read, and I can answer any questions. That sound good?
Great, thank you.
Great. All right, so, is somebody switching my slides for me, or do I have to say switch?
I'm, I'm managing the slides.
Oh, that's very kind of you, thank you so much.
So I've got what I will cover up, can you see it now?
What I will cover, that's perfect. So what I'm going to cover this evening, this is a brief overview, is what is succession planning, what was the methodology we used, the summary of our findings, some general recommendations, I'll go through the report, and then take any questions. So next slide. People say, what is, you know, succession planning? It's a, it's a process, it's not a journey. It is the process of identifying and developing staff, so that your organization is prime for moving forward if there's a vacancy, it's the transfer of knowledge, it's making sure you have people within the organization who can step up, and it's also important to retain the knowledge of the people who may be retiring. The demographics of our workforce is such that municipal workers are leaving the workforce in, through retirement, we have a lot of long-serving employees, and a succession plan can help you address those vacancies and those critical needs when you do have a vacancy. It increases the availability of people to move into positions, and it provides incredible professional development opportunity and training. So, next slide. So, one of the things, I just mentioned the demographics, I happen to be in the last year of the baby boomers, and it's our generation that's getting ready or already retiring, and that's the largest demographic group. Then you have the Generation Xers, who are your core workforce now, but their age is 40 to 57, so they're kind of on the horizon, they're the smallest demographic group out there. And then we have the millennials, who's going to be the workforce of your future. So when you think of, what are the demographics of our workforce, what does it look like now, that's something that we did, and what do we need to do to plan for the immediate, the short range, and the long range? So what our methodology was, we met with the administration, and then we did a pre, a kickoff presentation to the staff, then we did surveys of the key staff, department heads, division heads, and we then met individually with each one to talk about their departments, what their primary missions are, what their functions are, what staff they have, what is the potential for retirements or turnover, and what are the competencies of the staff in the department to step up either in a vacancy, for a crisis, or a long-term illness, or retirement, or moving on? So we evaluated all of that data to come up with our recommendations. Then, next slide, the, the structure of how we did, how we structured our findings were in three different priorities, I just used the words immediate, short-term, and long-term. So you see the priorities that we came up with, priority one departments, those are the ones that are, are in, in immediate need of attention. There is no obvious person to fill in, in a vacancy, and you have to pay, the, the town should pay attention to what that looks like if you lost somebody in those key roles. The second group, we called priority two, they have staff, they have staff who potentially could move into a role, a leadership role, a department or division head role, but they're not there yet. The, the, if there was a sudden vacancy, a permanent vacancy, the staff in these departments could keep the, the wheels running, but they wouldn't have the competencies to fill that vacant position at this time, with more training, more mentoring, more succession planning, and professional development. There's likely staff within those priority two departments who could grow into the positions. Priority three departments, that's your long-term, all you have to focus on with them is mentoring, training, they tend to be the larger departments who might have more staff to train and help cover. So those are the three categories that we came up with, and then the next slide shows you the, the priorities one, two, and three. And while your town is very special, it is not unique in this. Usually municipalities have just a few that are the priority one, a few more maybe because of transitions and people leaving for retirements or other jobs, and then more in the priority three. So the good news is, you're, you're, you're special but not unique in that way. So the priority departments, as you can see, is human resources in the town manager, and we went through this through the report, but I'll touch on it just for a moment. You have a, a, a human resource department of one, if you lose your human resource director tomorrow, you would have a challenge getting that work done. The same thing in the town manager's office, while there are people around, it is not set up to succeed in a vacancy, so that's why they are considered a priority one. The priority two are, you can see, accounting, cemetery, community development, council on aging, health, telemedia, and veteran services. There are people in those departments, they're not going to be at the critical mass if there was a vacancy, but there may not be somebody ready to fill that leadership role. So those departments are the ones that we should in the short term, take a look at, factor in, what could we do to get the people in the department ready? And there's not an immediate horizon of somebody leaving, so the priority two departments are really primed for getting ready to do succession planning, professional development. The priority three departments you'll see there are building, IT, finance, library, public works, and town clerk. The town just did an excellent job in the public works department, dealing with some turnover and new staff, so they maybe moved down from a two to a three, because they're really well poised now to be ready for any challenges that face them. So when we think about, next slide, thank you, you're way ahead of me, when we think about, how do we deal with succession planning, these three bullets of, of steps that you need to take, you've already taken some of the first steps. The town has been really proactive with professional development, with mentoring department heads who, who many went out of their way to say the opportunity for professional development, many are involved in their professional networks and associations, those are great ways to develop department staff. So what the three words are, the assess, evaluate, develop. You need to do this exercise. Your town is way ahead of many towns, oftentimes, we get the call saying, what do I do, I've got these 10 vacancies. The town has been very proactive in doing the analysis. We went through each department, spoke with each department manager, evaluated the competencies of the staff. One thing I want to make clear is, we weren't evaluating the performance of the staff, it's what were the skill gaps to help the department run, which helps you identify and evaluate what you need to do within that department. We identified the critical positions in those departments, and we identified the skills and the skills gap, and we evaluate, and we looked at those in line for promotion. Some departments have more hierarchical structures, it's easier to do succession planning in those, which is why you see departments like public works, library, and those in the priority three, there's already a built-in structure for promotional opportunity, the assessor's office is, is another one like that. So any department that has an assistant director or a professional technical supervisor within the organization is usually poised to have a smoother transition in a vacancy. And then the develop is really what the long-term plan is. You're going to develop and evaluate, what do people know, what they, what do they need to know? The other thing is to evaluate any time you have a vacancy, of what you should do, is that, is that organization still working for you? So the town has been very proactive in getting ready for vacancies. Often, we have to react to vacancies, but having a plan like this is setting you up in the short and long term as well. So, that, do I have any, that was quickly the PowerPoint slide, do I have any questions on the slides, or do you want me to briefly go through the report?
I have one question.
Sure.
So, I understand that the HR department was category one, and in the report, you cite number of employees and things like that, is that just under that department's span of control, or did that include the school system?
We just looked at, right, we just looked at the, the town.
Okay. Okay, because the school system has their own HR department, right, Paul?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do they operate similarly? Like, could someone from the HR, could someone from school HR cover?
No, we, we provide all benefit services for general government and school employees, so healthcare, retirement, you know, and, and, you know, those type of issues all come through us. The school HR is really driven towards employment and those type of actions in the schools.
So those numbers did then include the school employees?
The, the number of people that, that she oversees are both, yeah, so we, we're servicing retirees who come in with concerns on, on both sides, you know, it could be a retired school custodian, it could, you know, or it could just be somebody, you know, retired library worker and so forth, so. But in other words, we don't have a comparable equivalent over there, so in other words, there isn't anybody in the school side who's handling health insurance, there's nobody in the school side who's, you know, who's dealing with those type of, of benefit issues that we see on, on, you know, that exclusively come through the, the town side.
Okay.
And again, all our payroll, everything comes through here from both sides, that's what I'm saying, it's all funneled through here.
So to, to Ken's question, it's not done now, but could it be done? Were there some cross-training in case?
I've never, I've never seen it done that way in the communities that I've worked at. No, but I'm just saying, because, because a lot of that is tied in with payroll, generally there's a cross-training, and, and Mary can speak to it, a lot of those functions sometimes get shared between HR and the treasurer's office, or sometimes the accounting office, because a lot of it is payroll withholdings and deductions and benefit eligibility, so I, and I don't know if, Mary, you want to speak to that, but all, sometimes you see that cross, crossover.
Absolutely, and I think maybe I, I misunderstood the question, I thought you were asking me how many staff in the HR department. The responsibility of this HR department is broad, it, it does cover all of the benefits of all employees. We don't typically, it, there are a handful of shared or cross-trained school and general government HR departments, I will tell you, in my humble experience, they don't work as well as the idea behind them, there are different collect- There are different collective bargaining minister. There's another elected board and a superintendent that becomes management of it. But the processes are already controlled by the general government. Things like payroll, benefits, workers' compensation, typically unemployment. So, which is also amazing that you have just one person in this department who does an excellent job. There, you do have another position that deals with safety. And then there is a close working relationship with the treasurer's office.
Okay.
Hi, Steve Maffetone, Assistant Town Manager. So the school does not really handle anything on the benefits of the insurance at all. So as you, there's over a thousand retirees, eight hundred, school personnel. So they, they don't handle it. They pretty much just handling their HR issues alone. And there is no cross-training or available. And they also have their own issues going on right now and have been with their HR department. So it has always been in the town hall. And not, and not only for the school personnel, but also for the water district, all the water districts. So a lot of that is done also by the HR director.
Okay.
All right, should I just walk through? What I'll do is I'll walk through a few, few of our departments so that you get a flavor of how we put together the work. So if you're looking at page five, that shows the summary of the chart that we just went over on the slide. And then you'll see we've broken the report into the Priority One, Two, and Three. The immediate, short term, and long term. What we've done is we've listed the department. We have, and I'm on page five, thank you, I forgot you had the report. We list the department, we list the department head, how many full-time equivalents in the department, and the retirement risk. We're always cautious when we talk about retirement risk because it has nothing really to do with the age or the longevity. But if it's somebody who is eligible right now within a few years, we put that as a risk. We're very careful not to have it be a function of age. There's all those different things. So, so we do mention that, what is the, the risk? Because a plan is always to avoid risk. What is the risk of a position being, becoming vacant? A, a department of one, there's also a risk of somebody, somebody being hit by a bus and who could pick up the work. So that's what we mean by, you know, the Priority One risk. We go into, in the overview section, we talk about the mission of the department, the roles, the responsibility, and the work that gets done in the department. And then under the findings and the succession assessment, we did this for each department. We talk about how it became a prior, which number priority it was. And we talk about the reasons it became a Priority One. And then we gave recommendations. We do recommend, almost to the point of the question, you can see on page six, the recommendations in the HR department. Is that, the, the town do look at the organizational structure and say, are there in the short term, medium term, long term, some opportunities for cross-training? Whether that's, excuse me, within that department or cross-department? We do recommend that, you know, you put on your list of, of things to consider, the creation of an HR generalist position. We don't like it to sound personal, but you have a one-person show who's getting everything done right now. But there is a risk for succession planning. So that's how we structured the report. We went with the overview, the findings, and then the recommendations. So to pull out a, a Priority Number Two department, we could jump to the, I'll just do another example. On page eight, the community development department. So that viewed as a Priority Number Two because there is somebody in the position that is not likely, anything could happen, is not likely to leave in the next few years. But there was not necessarily an obvious person to fill that role. So you're covered for the short term. And when you look to the findings and succession assessment, you see that there are staff there. It could, the department could run if there was a long-term illness or an immediate vacancy. The department members could cover the work. But the person to step into the shoes, whether it's interest or, or competencies, is not there. So again, we suggested, because you do have other positions that are typically under a community development and planning department, take a look at across departments of land use and academic development, planning, conservation, those sorts of things to say, should we be bringing people together to share knowledge with the idea of in the future, what will we look like? There's not an immediate need, which is why it's a Priority Two, not a Priority One. But there is not an obvious succession within the department. Then I'll do an example, I'm just doing a random example of a Priority Three department. I think I will jump to the building department. They're a Priority Three. In this department, you have the staffing and the structure to step up. You have a, a recent hire, which means that person will be there for a little while. It's greater than a five-year risk. There's staff within, there's competencies there. And this is an example where the recommendations are really focused on continuing education, certifications, licenses, professional development, keeping up the educational credits that are needed. So those are just examples on the one, two, and three to give you a flavor of it. And I won't read the report to you. We'll, we'll let you do that. And I can, in the, the final section was the slide that we shared on the assessing, evaluating, and developing. So I'll just happy to answer any questions or give you time to digest it. And if there's any questions, maybe through the Assistant Town Manager, they could be forwarded to me.
Any questions or comments?
To me, this seems like something that the next step will be for next year for goals-wise in order to get this put in place into a process that's ongoing. So there's ongoing review, updates, and so forth for training, personnel, et cetera.
Anything else?
If, if I'll comment, I think that's an excellent, it's a, it's, we make jokes about master plans that sit on the shelf. A succession plan shouldn't sit on the shelf. It should be evaluated, you know, on a regular basis to say, every time there's a vacancy, it should be tweaked. It should be looked at, what did we gain, what, what did we lose? So I think you're absolutely right. It is a living document or a living plan. And, you know, the short and long range can be built into whatever planning you have for the future.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks.
All right, great, well, I wish you a pleasant evening and be well. And feel free to reach out if you need me. Thanks.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our monthly traffic safety committee report. Christine Clancy is providing her inaugural report, and she'll be followed by Chief Spiny to talk some of the traffic counts that we've done. So, good evening, Christine, thank you for joining us.
Good evening. The traffic committee met on May 16th to discuss current pending and completed actions. So under current actions, we, the neighborhood in the vicinity of Doral Drive and Dayton Street requested the addition of a stop sign on the right corner of Dayton Street at the intersection of Doral Drive. Residents reported that vehicles were not yielding where Doral, Doral meets Dayton, which could result in a hazardous situation between vehicles at this intersection. They also expressed concerns for the safety of the kids in the neighborhood. This was reviewed by both DPW and the Police Department. And a stop sign is proposed to be added at this intersection. So at this time, the traffic committee requests that the select board approve for the stop sign to be added on Dayton Street. And just moving along for pending actions. So we just, or, oh, sorry, are we going to just vote now or?
Do you want to?
Why don't we stop there and talk about that one? Any, I, I, I was, um, Doral is a, is a dead end on both ends, right? It's a dead-end street on both ends?
Yes. It, it is.
So the issue is people, the issue is people coming from Dayton onto Doral?
Correct. The way that the intersection is made up, it is a pretty wide intersection. So people are treating, from turning to Dayton onto Doral, this as one continuous road. And so the neighborhood has voiced concern with people treating both continuous roadway from Dayton onto Doral and moving, traveling down Doral, at Doral Drive.
Were you going to say something, Paul?
No, no, it would tend to slow traffic if you're having them stop at that intersection as opposed to just going right through and then making the other, stop the other way. We, we looked at both configurations.
Any questions?
No.
You good, Ken?
I'm good.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
So you said the, the chief reviewed this and it's his recommendation to put the, the stop sign there too?
Yeah, he's on the call as well. Chief Spiny, Chief Spiny, you have anything to add to this?
Good evening. I will just, I, I took a look myself. And when these issues are brought to our attention by the neighborhood, not only do I consider their concerns that they're passing on to us, I always take into account if someone is unfamiliar with the area and they're on the street. So this intersection is a perpendicular intersection with no markings. So if someone was on Dayton and they didn't realize they're coming up to an intersection, they could literally drive right through it. So, you know, I take both, both matters into account, along obviously with, you know, the neighborhood concerns that people are, like Director Clancy just said, they're just going down and they're making it one continuous road, taking the Y turn. So there was some concerns of pedestrians and whatnot, and if a vehicle was coming the other way. So I recommend the stop sign placement.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the stop sign on the right corner of Dayton Street where it intersects with Doral, if you're facing Doral Street.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, Christine, you want to proceed with the chart?
Thank you. So under pending actions, we talked as a group, the Shared Streets in Space Grants Program, the award for the crosswalk at Mill Road and Raymond Road. That award is pending, and we anticipate to hear an update in this, end of this month or in June. We also discussed the bottleneck reduction competitive grant program. And that award is also pending for Golden Cove and Bilreka Road intersection. Also, just want to note that although that the, the last year's grant program has not been awarded, they have also opened up the grant program for the upcoming year submissions. And those are due June 30th. So right now, we are looking to see if there's another program that we want to submit for, for this upcoming year. But we are still waiting for the, the Golden Cove and Bilreka Road intersection award, the decision on that. We also discussed the NIMCOG traffic study report. And this is regarding the concern for truck traffic on Swain Road. That study is ongoing, and we expect to be, we expect it to be completed this, by the end of this month. Are there any questions on pending actions?
Are they, are they doing the traffic counts now on Swain?
They're doing the counts now as we speak on Swain.
And then the, has the, has the NIMCOG study for Ledge Road and Groton Road kicked off?
No, the latest information we have from Justin is they're, they're behind because of the transition. And he hopes to kick something off in the next couple of weeks to help us with the bigger issues of the access to Route Three and so, so forth.
Thank you.
And under completed actions, we did complete the Ledge Road school bus turnaround on Esther Way. This has been completed. There is some very minor work, punchless work remaining, loaming and seeding work. Other than that, the school bus turnaround is functioning properly. If there's no other questions, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Spiny, and he'll provide updates on the, the rest of the information.
Okay, good evening again, everyone. To start out with, we had two traffic studies, the first one being High Street. The traffic board was deployed on High at Douglas facing, I guess you could say, if you were coming from Acton Road, traveling up High Street, heading towards Douglas, the sign board was capturing vehicles heading in that direction. I guess you could say probably westerly. The sign was deployed from April 6th to April 18th. It picked up almost 4,000 vehicles. And I have it broken down into speed categories by percentage. Vehicles traveling 26 miles an hour to 30, 24%. 31 to 35, 68%. 36 miles an hour or greater, 8 and 1/2%. All total vehicles, average speed, 32 miles an hour.
What's the speed limit on that road, chief?
30. The second study was done in the area of 20 Stedman Street on April 4th through April 19th. The sign faced Chompser Street. So if you are, if you were going from Chompser Street onto Stedman Street, the sign board was picking up traffic heading towards Doral. So total vehicles, over 40,000 vehicles were picked up between that timeframe. 35 miles an hour or below, 87%. 36 to 40, 12%. 41 to 45 or higher, 1%. Average speed of all vehicles, 31.5 miles an hour. In addition to the two studies, there was a couple of residential concerns that we, that we answered. The first one was Stedman Street. There was a resident concern with the amount of heavy commercial vehicle traffic, like other parts of the town, obviously. So we took, we took a look at that. Obviously, on the whole section of Stedman Street, there are a number of commercial businesses. Most likely, some of this vehicle, heavy traffic is coming and going to those businesses. So as far as the exclusion request, you know, as, as the board is well aware, there's very strict criteria in place, overseen by the state for any type of heavy commercial vehicle exclusion. Real quick, some of that criteria is any type of alternate route must lie wholly within the community or lie partially in an adjacent community, but only on a state highway. Or lie partially in an adjacent community, but have the adjacent community's written approval. Clearly, we would not be able to do a viable alternative with these restrictions. The only road that could even be, even be considered to be able to handle the volume of Stedman Street to be an alternate would be North Row. And as the board is aware, North Row already has a heavy truck exclusion in place. So unfortunately, I see no viable alternative to, to remove heavy truck traffic off of Stedman Street as things stand right now. And then finally, there was some questions about a, we had an incident back on May 5th where a dog tragically was struck and killed on Pine Hill Road. One of the witnesses thought that the vehicle was traveling at excessive speeds and that Pine Hill Road has chronic excessive speeding. I will stipulate that, you know, we have had prior concerns on Pine Hill Road. It's a, it's a, it's a significant cut-through speed, you know, with a lot of vehicles. But on this particular accident, the officer that responded happened to be a full accident reconstructionist, the highest level you can be. And after he looked into the incident, he determined, based on some of the skid marks on scene, that the vehicle was in fact traveling out of below the posted speed limit. And it was just a tragedy where the dog had dotted out from it was just a tragedy where the dog had died out from its owner, not leashed, and ran out into the roadway, and a young lady in her vehicle struck the dog, and there was really nothing she could do. Since that time, we've had, we've had the Speed Board out on Pine Hill Road, and as of today, the average speed being picked up is 32 miles an hour. The road is posted 30. So we're going to keep at it. We will keep those roads as a priority for us. But according to these studies, we're not seeing chronic speeds. I think we're seeing volumes, but not chronic speeds. So that's my point.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for Christine or Chief Spiny?
Yeah, just a, a quick comment, actually. Christine, you, you had a lot of dates that you provided us. Do you think that's, even if they're estimates, do you think that's something you could add on to your updates in the future? So we can actually have the dates here?
Sure.
And then if they slip, priorities change, et cetera. You know, when we go through it the following month, we can just see how we did against it.
Sure, certainly.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're on to discussion items, Paul?
Yeah, thank you, members of the Board. A follow-up from a discussion at the last meeting having to do with the audit language in the Town Charter regarding change of the audit firm. Darlene Lucier is on the call this evening. I worked with Darlene Lucier and Finance Director John Souza to review the language and to come up with proposed language, and that's what we have here for you this evening. Where we're proposing is a way to meet the spirit of the discussion, and the intent would be to strike the language, you know, requiring a change in audit firm every three, audit or audit firm every three consecutive years, to basically saying that there'd be a, that the firm or the public accountant that conducts the audit shall change the audit team that performs the audit at least every five years. And so if, if this meets the Board's approval, we would, the next step would be is we'd prepare a warrant article for submission to the fall annual town meeting, and then if, if adopted at fall annual town meeting, it would then go to the ballot in spring of 2023, the town election.
Okay, the comment?
Yep.
I like the language. Only question I have is who's going to be responsible to make sure of compliance on this?
Basically, I think it would fall on the manager and the Board, because basically the audit, under the Town's Charter, the language we have in the Charter and bylaws, we cannot award a contract for more than five years. And generally, that's what we've done to, you know, whether it be a three-year with a two-year option or a straight five-year contract. So that's what it comes up. So I think whenever there'd be an issue of a new audit contract, this would jump right up to the surface, saying, wait a minute, you know, how are we in terms of the compliance with the Charter?
So then the Town Manager would bring it forward to the Board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because to Mark's point, it didn't pop up before, and it was here.
Well, exactly. That's why I thought it.
But I think that's real.
Because it can't be the elected Board. It needs to be the Town Manager that brings it to the Board.
Exactly.
And should we have a statement to that effect?
I don't know if you'd put a statement in the Charter language, but I think it would sort of be, it may, we may want to put it in your policies or, or procedures.
Should be somewhere.
Should be somewhere, but I don't know, I'm not so sure it belongs in the actual Charter itself.
I mean, I understand it's a responsibility probably for you, Paul, to bring it to us, but we're also all, as when we're elected, pretty much given the Charter and said, know your, your point, so we should also be aware of it.
Right, but it, it's kind of very tactical, you know, and I still think that it's incumbent on the administration to bring it forward to the Select Board.
But I think in the end, it falls.
Yeah.
I mean, this paragraph opens, and the only people that have responsibility in this paragraph are the Select Board.
Yeah.
Which is why, I mean, when, when I read this before and discovered that we hadn't done it.
That's why you took it so seriously.
Well, yeah, well, no, I mean, I, I viewed that it was previous Boards that were responsible for this, not the Town Administration.
Right, and I promise that the Town Manager and the Town Accountant and so forth will have a lot more oversight and be able to bring that forward to the Boards.
But the point is, if you're not going to state it, it's, it's on the Boards.
It, it should be stated, someplace.
I mean, responsibilities are stated other places in the Charter.
Right, but these, this section falls under the Select Board's responsibilities. If you look under Section 6 of the Charter, that sort of defines what the manager's responsibilities are with the Select Boards, and 6, 7 falls.
Right, I get that. So the Select Board makes a decision to either make sure that things have changed, or we've gone to another firm. All I'm saying is that somebody within the administration needs to make sure they can bring that forward to the Select Board, so they can make that.
And where should that reside, Mark? In people's heads or written down somewhere?
No, it should be written someplace.
Where? In the, in the Town Manager Responsibilities section?
It could be, I mean.
Or is it part of, is it part of the General Town Manager's section that says he's?
Yeah, I can say I didn't really get that far into looking into where it should be, but it should be written someplace, in my opinion.
So do we need some time to go look at that? Where, where you would recommend putting it?
I mean, I'd be happy to look at it.
I like this paragraph, the way it was written. I went back into the Charter and thought it fit right in, really didn't think about where we should house, you know, that the Town Manager should bring it to us, but I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I think it's written well, too. I like it.
Well, I, I guess what you, the other thing would be to go look at the Town Manager paragraph and see how it's written that says the Town Manager is accountable to the Select Board for, and see if it's covered in what's there already. Because it's, I mean, that's part of the Town operations, and it, I don't remember the exact language, Paul, but it already says that somewhere. That you're responsible to the Board for the Town operations and performance under the responsibilities of the Charter. So maybe it's.
Yeah, and, and to me, I'm not really looking for somebody that we can say, oh, they needed, they didn't do this or something. It's more to make sure they understand that.
Yeah, so it doesn't drop.
Yeah.
What were you going to say, Pat?
Wouldn't it be covered under responsibilities to bring forward contracts? I mean, and to, and to follow up on contracts. I mean, I would think it would kind of be covered under that, that part of his responsibilities.
Yeah, except again, it wasn't.
Right, I understand.
Yeah. It's a good point, it's just, you know, is that the best place, or is it?
So maybe, maybe it's there already, and we just have to actually pay attention to it.
Yeah, maybe, okay.
That was kind of my point, is I, I think that the Charter identifies all this stuff.
Yeah.
It just should be known.
It just fell through the cracks.
Right.
Yeah. The only, so, so we had, if the Town decided to change firms, that would also satisfy the requirement, but we don't necessarily have to state that explicitly here?
Hmm, right. It just says audit team. I like the way that's worded.
Well, yeah, but it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because it takes.
Can either be in-house or move somewhere else.
So it can be a different audit team within the same company or a new company?
Just so happens the opportunity.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
The next item I have pertains to a submission of a one-stop grant application for the Vinyl Square Transportation Improvements 25% Design Plan. As you know, we've been seeking various avenues for funding to get this work done, including the state budget and so forth. Well, as Evan Belansky reported, because we now qualify as a housing choice community, we do have special privileges in order to apply for a $250,000 one-stop grant application that could provide funding for these Vinyl Square improvements. And then basically, as we submit the application, Evan needs a letter of authorization from the Chair of the Select Board. And when we look back and saw that it was, the Board endorsed it in January, I think, speaking of Virginia, it was, we really wanted to make it clear and bring it to you this evening to have explicit, explicit vote and direction to authorize her to submit the letter of support for this grant application.
Yeah, we never talked about the grant in January, because we, we didn't talk about funding. So I just wanted to make sure that we were consciously making that decision as a Board.
Do you want a motion?
Unless there's any discussion. Go ahead.
I will make a motion that we grant the Chair authorization to write a letter in favor of the one-stop application for Vinyl Square, seeking $250,000 for housing choice designation to advance 25% Design Plan.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you.
The next agenda item under discussion items was the LGBTQIA+ Listening Session Follow-Up. So I just wanted to have a top-level discussion on how we plan to work that going forward. When we had other listening sessions for different topics, someone on the Select Board or a couple of people typically looked at the feedback and then worked that. I wasn't sure if maybe, Pat, you wanted to get involved in that with the Diversity Committee as the liaison, or if anybody has any other ideas. So.
Yeah, I mean, I would be glad to do that. I was going to, you know, try to create, you know, set up a, a list of things that I heard that night. I haven't had a chance to do that yet. Expect to within the next, next week or so, and yeah, I'd be glad to do that.
Yeah, and we have the, we have the draft minutes now, too, so we have the documentation from the Recording Secretary. So do you want to just run point with the Diversity Committee? Because I'm sure they'll want to look at follow-up as well. Anybody else care to be involved, or? Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Pat. Next up is the flag policy discussion. Paul and I put this as two separate agenda items, because I think there were some things raised in Attorney Haverty's memo with respect to things we're already doing, like the Veterans banners and the Fourth of July banners that are bought by local businesses to sponsor the parade. So, so I think we have those things to discuss, as well as the request to hang the Pride Month banners on the Town Common. So let me just first start. Are there questions for Attorney Haverty on his letter? Or anything that the Board needs clarified? Is there anything you'd like to say, Paul?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. At your request, I did review the recent Supreme Court decision, Insure it Left versus City of Boston. I do think it provides a very good template for the Town in terms of what it needs to do to make sure when it's acting, to allow flags or to disallow flags, that it's doing it in a way that protects the Town's interests. In, in saying that, the City of Boston adopted, didn't really adopt a specific policy, they just simply had an ad hoc process where they would have people come in who were looking for permits to do events in City Hall Plaza, and as part of that, they would allow them to put flags up on municipal flagpoles. There was a group that came in, a Christian group, they had devised some sort of Christian flag that they wanted to fly on the, the municipal flagpole, and the City of Boston denied them the opportunity to fly that. And so it went to federal court, went to a federal appeals court, and then went all the way up to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court really took a look at exactly what the City of Boston had done, pointed out that it really had never exercised any control over the sort of messages that were being flown on the city flagpoles, and said that in a nine to nothing vote, so, you know, there was no sort of partisan disagreement in terms of the end result. There were certainly some different nuances and concurring opinions, which frequently occurs. But ultimately, they said the City of Boston was not exercising protected government speech because it was not controlling the message of what was being flown on those flagpoles. So the lesson that comes out of there is that the Town really needs to pay close attention and to have policies in place that address that. And in fact, the Town did adopt a flag policy very recently, and that flag policy is very restrictive. And I think the, the next question that came up had to do with whether or not the banners or bunting would fall within the category of flags in the flag policy. And again, the Shirt Left case really provides a good example of that, and it sort of goes over the history of flags, you know, back to medieval times up to the present, and it took a very expansive view of what constitutes a flag. So again, I think that if the Town wants to make sure it is protecting itself and doesn't put itself in a situation where it is without the ability to deny somebody that wants to come in and fly a flag that would go against a message that the Town wanted to support, the Town needs to make sure it's following its flag policy very closely. So I, I think that any exceptions granted to the flag policy could, could present the sort of problem that the adoption of the flag policy was meant to prohibit, which is, again, you know, if somebody wanted to come in and fly a Confederate flag on municipal flagpole, that's the reason the flag policy exists, right, is to prevent that sort of circumstance from occurring. And if you're making exceptions to the flag policy without specific details in your policy, then I think that you're running the risk of, of falling into that situation. So my recommendation was that the Town not allow any flags or bunting or banners or anything of that nature on municipal property unless it adopts a specific exception, exception to its flag policy, or revises its flag policy to bring that particular speech into what the Town is adopting as government speech. And my letter goes on to express that, you know, one way to avoid having to continually go back and revise and revise and revise your flag policy is to tie it to something like the Proclamations. In that if the, the Town issues a proclamation, it is showing that that is a message that the, the government supports, and therefore should be something that could be allowed to, to be flown on a municipal flagpole, or, you know, on a bunting or banner on municipal property. But again, I think that in those circumstances, you want to make sure you're being very specific in issuing those proclamations, that the proclamation includes the right to do that. And I think that that would be sufficient to protect the Town and its interests. I, I did also address the issue with regards to the holiday decorations and the, the local business support and sort of the advertisements on those. Those have been forever controlled 100% in terms of the message by the Town. So I don't think that those run into the same type of situation that the City of Boston case involved, where they were exercising no control. That being said, I do think that it's better to, again, revise the, the flag policy to make sure that it's addressed therein.
They've been controlled because they have to come through the Town and purchase the banner?
Well, and, and my understanding is that the Town has been controlling the message on the banner. That's the, the key point.
I see.
And so therefore, it is adopting that message as government speech. But, but I do worry about exceptions to, you know, a specified flag policy. So I would prefer that anything that is going to be allowed to be flown be directly addressed in the policy. So I do think that it would be better for the Town to modify the policy to directly address those circumstances, even though, you know, with regards to the holiday flags and, and the, the business advertisement on them, I, I don't think that that would put the Town in the same position.
So if I just, if we just look at the, the holiday banners that the businesses purchase as an example, or the memorial, the Veterans banners that the Town's done in the past, where they controlled the formatting and the message? What you're saying is you think that would qualify as government speech as it is now, but it would be safer to put something in the policy written down, and is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so would you, would you put something in the policy that is specific to selling business banners to support the Fourth of July Parade? Or would it be something more general that says where the Town is controlling the messaging, those flags are allowed?
Yeah, so I, I think that puts you in a different, difficult position if you do it that way.
Which way?
If you do.
The Broadway?
Correct. Because then it's going to be people coming in and saying, well, can you adopt this message then?
Right.
Right, well, I think the proclamation approaches the way to be able to do that, where you're adopting messages without having to change your policy over and over again. But I think you're safer with a more specific policy in terms of, you know, the, the specific issues that you want to address.
Paul Cohen, or Pat, or George, or anybody, what are the specific banners that the Town has controlled the messaging on in the past that have gone up? Is it just the Fourth of July business banners and the, you said you're not doing the Veterans banners this year?
Yeah, the banners that we've generally controlled, and it precedes any and all of us, because it went back to the 350th and, and other. of us, because went back to the 350th and other celebrations, was the banners that hung on the decorative poles or up in Drum Hill or Vinyl Square, where the town parade committee in this case, or the 350th committee, what have you, came up with a standard design and then offered sponsorships for them, or in the case that they came up with a standard veterans' design, like you see in many other communities, Littleton and so forth, and then offered people to purchase one on behalf of a loved one, provided they served in the armed services. Beyond that, aside from the, you know, voting promotion things, you know, Vote Tuesday banners, the only other banners that I think are displayed would be the Military Community Covenant has displayed banners on, you know, on the common on those pillars, you know, recognizing somebody who's coming home from active service, or in this case, we have a farmer's market banner out there right now. I think those are all civic-based, but I think the only one that's a little, you know, different would be the Military Community Covenant banners, or, you know, I don't recall any other banners being displayed by the town, because we really don't, we don't string them across the roadways in town. They used to years ago do it into the center, but then that became unsafe and was halted by a property owner who was very uncomfortable with the liability and the safety of it. But aside from that, that's pretty much it.
So the 350th is done and over, right? So what would we, if we were to not stop something, what would this board need to put into the policy? Is it just the Fourth of July?
Like I said, the only other banners I know would be the, you know, would be the Military Community Covenant.
When do those go up?
Those have been up for years, right, for at least about 10 years.
They go up when a deployed person comes back.
Oh, okay.
Welcome home.
Yeah.
I like, I like the policy the way we had it, the way we have it right now. I mean, and as soon as we adopted that policy, right away, we had a problem with St. Vannas, remember, they came out and they wanted to bother you, and we had to decline them, and, you know, they're great people, it's nothing against, we did give them a proclamation and we honored them, you know, which we could do for anybody, but I think to have to make a distinction of A or B, you know, we can do this one, we can't fly this one, I think it puts too much pressure on us. I think, just keep it.
Yeah, that, I was kind of thinking the same thing, you know, I think the proclamation idea is a good idea, the only problem is, is that it's still up to us to decide.
Every proclamation we're gonna...
Which ones and which ones don't, and that, I don't think that works well at all.
Well, I would think it'd have to be a very unusual situation for us to waive our policy and to put that in the proclamation. I mean, it wouldn't be just a regular proclamation for our bidet, or, you know, somebody's 100th anniversary or something like that, I think it would have to be something very specific. But it does give us an option, if there is something very critical that we feel that strongly about.
Yeah.
Which, we can always do that anyway, I guess, we can always waive, I mean, we waive our policy on alcohol licenses very often, so it's not that we can't waive it, even the way it's written right now.
So in other words, just have it in reserve so we could do it?
So the only thing I would say to that is, when you start waiving it and you're creating exceptions, then you're not really controlling the message to the same extent that you would be if you have a policy in place and you're following it consistently.
I think you want to be consistent, I don't think there's any other way. That's my opinion, because otherwise you're gonna make a lot more hard feelings.
And what would you do for the Fourth of July banners? Stop them?
The banners on the poles, you mean, and things like that?
Yeah.
Those are advertising and things, I don't have a problem with that, I'm talking about...
Because those are already under government speech.
Yeah.
So you're on to the second topic. Okay, I get it.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was doing.
Okay, that's fine.
So, is, so you think we should change our policy to specifically indicate that we allow the banners for the parade committee to do their fundraising, is that...
I think that that's a safer approach. Again, the more exceptions you create...
The Military Covenant to welcome someone home.
The more exceptions you create to a specific policy, the less likely that policy gets upheld.
So let me just, let's just take that piece. Any comments on that or objections to that?
Well, I guess then...
To be able to, to, more safe, to mitigate the risk more of continuing the practice that is probably still okay under government speech.
So what about the others that you mentioned, Paul, like the farmer's market on the common and Vote Tuesday? I mean, I guess Vote Tuesday, that's probably...
Vote Tuesday, is that considered a flag? That's a sign.
It's a banner.
It's a sign.
It's a banner that's...
It's stuck in the lawn, isn't it?
It's put the same place that the Military Community Covenant banner is.
Move it two feet.
Is the Covenant, is the Military Covenant a hung banner, or is it a lawn sign?
They use the same two, there's two pillars, and they string it up between two granite posts.
Oh, okay, so that's, that would fall under the flag definition?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't in the same place. So Vote Tuesday goes on that? What else goes on it?
Welcome home. And farmer's market.
Farmer's market.
And, I mean, there might be other things like the holiday prelude coming up, you know, things like that, events that are coming up, there's sometimes banners.
I think it's current events is what gets put up there.
Civic events.
Civic events, right.
So would all those banners and flags have to be prospectively defined as part of the policy? I don't necessarily know that they have to be fully identified to every single message that the town is putting. I mean, Vote Tuesday indisputably is a government message, you know, being pushed by the government. But I do worry about some of the distinctions. I think, if you are adopting proclamations of support for specific messages, then how are those differentiated between, you know, the more pure government speech, such as the Vote Tuesday and the Holiday Decoration Committee banners and things of that nature? I am more comfortable with being more specific.
So, in a new flag, in an updated flag policy, could you have an appendix which kind of listed what was considered public speech, or what was considered government speech that's approved?
I mean, we can try, you know, try to list all that out, and again, you know, this is, it's not the town charter, right? Your flag policy is relatively easily modified, right? It doesn't require the sort of process that changing the town charter does, so you can continue to go back to it, but, you know, I think you want to avoid month after month, having someone come in here and ask you to add another message to your flag policy.
Well, and that's what's gonna happen, that's what's gonna happen, so it was the same, that was what we talked about when we did the original flag policy, is this month after month, week after week, and I think tying, the other part of the issue, I think tying it to a proclamation is just gonna create the month after month, week after week now, in the form of a proclamation request, instead of in the form of a flag request. So that's, that's where I, my head hurts a little bit on that one, I think it starts to open it all back up again.
And once you're making exceptions, you're dead, in my opinion.
Could you, could you have a policy that says basically we fly the municipal flags and the municipal poles like we have now, that you fly civic events within 30 days of their event date on the pillars in the common?
But what is a civic event?
Right, is a DEIC event, a civic event?
Yeah, it's definition, yeah.
Juneteenth, kite day?
My birthday.
I mean, I would think they all would be.
Yeah.
Your birthday.
Like, farmer's market's a civic event, if you're gonna have a peace rally, that's a civic event.
And so, Ken, when you're thinking about this, you're talking about the banner between the, so if there's multiple events in a month...
And you could put a time on it, like two weeks prior, 10 days prior, you know, just as a notification to communicate to the town.
So maybe the farmer's market has to come down for a couple days while we put another one up?
But the town doesn't bear the expense of advertising it. If someone wants to put up a, you know, a peace rally, they gotta come up with a sign. I don't want the town having to start printing sign after sign after sign for, you know, farmer's market, or...
So then you're not control, you're not controlling the speech part of it?
Well, I mean, you could have preapproval of what goes into anything that's placed there.
You would have to approve, get it approved?
The only other thought that comes to mind is, I don't think it ends at flags and banners, it also pertains to use of the town common, or even the use of a meeting room in this building, giving an example, and I don't mean to be insensitive by the example, but if you remember a couple years ago, there was that George Floyd rally on the common. That wasn't a town thing, I think that was done by individuals, okay? Why I mention that's important is if another group of individuals came in and wanted to use the common for a similar type of event, how do you say no? And I think that's the question. So again, I'm not trying to go by the merits of the particular case, but I just think it's really beyond flags and banners, it's use of any kind of town resource, whether it's...
In that rally, did they pull a permit?
They coordinated with the police department, but I don't recall them coming to the select board and saying, "We're gonna host this event." But all I'm saying is, you could see, you could see, think of a contemporary issue that could want to meet on the common, having to do with a potential Supreme Court ruling that's gonna come down, that we, a draft was inadvertently leaked, you know, that, a group like that could want to speak on the common on whatever side of that issue they're on, and I'm not so sure how the town deals with that, because, you know what I'm saying? Because it's the whole issue of what we're trying to get at.
Yeah, but isn't that...
So I'm not trying to make things uncomfortable, I'm just trying to point out the complexities of the issue in terms of, and that was a specific, you know, as we're sitting here, that example ran through my mind of a couple years ago, that could happen right now, and so I just...
Is there anything to stop a group from just showing up on the common and...
No, no, what we say to people, because we've sort of managed, quote unquote, "the common" through DPW in my office, we basically say to them, "It's a common, we can't give you exclusive use of the resource because it's the town common," but it just raises those type of complexities of...
What I always thought the common was for.
Yeah, exactly, right, but there, but that event with the George Floyd thing was sort of a closed, contain, you know, we shut everything down, we, you know, we sort of shepherded that effort. All I'm saying is, what happens when the next issue comes in, on whatever side it is, and as you said, you've got, let's call it, what is it, you've got a sticky one on abortion right now, and what if either side wanted the common, wanted that same type of coordination for the common, I think we'd be obligated to provide it. And I think that's, that's my whole point, is I think it goes beyond just flags and banners. In essence, you're sort of caught in it just by the nature of the fact that people gather.
But tonight, we're just talking about flags and banners.
Right, but I'm just trying to point out that I think the issue could, goes beyond that, to the point where, you know, I mean, I think people notice, for example, the Armenian genocide example, it was in the paper, they flew the flag in Lowell, they flew it in Westford, and I don't know what they're gonna do post the Boston case decision, but I think that sort of, that sort of raises the issue, and that's when we talked about this, when, with the chair and council, about the idea of a proclamation or something, that in essence, when you sign a proclamation, you're endorsing that event or speech, or effort as the government's. And therefore, if people aren't happy with that, then they change the people who are serving in the government. And I think that's sort of the stickiness of the issue. The only other thing that came to mind is, there was a year, we had a farmer's market where it wasn't run by the town, you remember, it was run by individuals, they were private individuals, and yet we sort of allowed them to put the signs up and everything for the farmer's market.
That's when it was right on the common.
It was right on the common, so that's why I'm saying, it gets a little dicey when you start getting into the weeds.
Do any, do any municipalities have like a separate banner pole or a separate flag pole for messages that they will endorse where, you know, maybe it's not on every flagpole in town, but in honor of...
It doesn't, Lowell, have one that they raise this as...
One event or one month, they put...
Just those flags, you know, like Armenian and...
I thought they did it right at City Hall, front of City Hall.
Yeah, but isn't it, there's a separate pole, isn't it? I mean, it's not the, you know...
Yeah, I think some, you're talking Lowell?
Maybe they, like, they take down the Lowell flag or something.
Yeah, I know that in Boston, they would take down the City of Boston flag and put up the replacement.
Lowell does, Christine Clancy just texted me, Lowell does have that.
Yeah, I think Lowell has...
I don't know if we want to do that.
I'm just asking a question.
Right. I mean, that would...
But then you'd have to manage that.
Then you're managing that.
Right, I'm not sure, yeah. What's the rule, what are the rules for that flagpole? Right, yeah.
And I want to make it clear, I don't think that this policy or this discussion really applies to people that are carrying signs, or holding banners themselves, rather than affixing them to town property, I don't think that we have any right to prevent that.
Right, and we run into that on Election Day, people can hold the signs 150 yards away, but we don't allow them to leave them unattended. Remember, that's when we get into these kerfuffles occasionally on Election Days, people tend to leave the signs, and then somebody goes out and raises an issue, hey, what, you know, please put the sign down or have somebody take it, I mean, you know, it's all the, you know, devil's in the details.
It's all the pachycah.
And then the other thing we do, as you know, we're not related to it, but all those annoying little signs that are put in the right of way, you know, trying to sell furniture and other stuff.
Well, you're making the lie happen.
No, but that's why, no, but it's important, no, but that's why, you know, it's important because we do do that. No, but we do that, we go out there and we remove all those as best we can, because...
Well, you know, you go down the back stairway.
Right, but those are in the public way, I just want you to understand, the reason we do that is, is they're in the public way, and then we had an issue, was it maybe about six years ago, where a campaign person running for office in town was putting his signs there, and we had to notify them to take those signs away. It didn't go over well. So anyway, I'm just trying to give you the sense of the full magnitude of what we deal with.
So where are we at?
Yeah, so, like, what do we need to do today?
I'm still in two places. What is the board gonna do about, do we need to, when it comes to things like the Fourth of July banners, that Paul, Attorney Haverty has already said are government speech, do we want to clarify, do we want to draft something in the policy to clarify those things that are already done and accepted under government speech?
And my recommendation is that you do that.
Or, or the other option is to stop doing them, that's kind of what I'm hearing. So, that's question one for the board, and then question two, I think, is the request for the pride bunting's or any other thing that comes up, how do we want to handle that? Are we staying by the policy as it's written? Or are we going to start making exceptions to write into the policy? So question one.
I'll just say on the first question, that's a major revenue source for the parade.
Yeah, I know.
And if that's lost, I don't know where things go from there, because I don't know how the parade committee could fund the parade without banner sales.
But if you go to the bunting, I don't think it's in our purview to put bunting's under those banners that people have bought and paid for, without, you know, like before, like if they, if it's brought up before and they say, "Well, this is what it's gonna look like, you got this pole, this pole, you're putting it here," and there's a rainbow bunting, and they know that's what they're buying, fine, I wouldn't want to go to the parade committee and say, "Start putting bunting's."
So, part one, do we want Attorney Haverty to help us draft some language for things like the Fourth of July bunting, or Fourth of July banners? And other civic...
You're telling, when you say Fourth, you mean the parade banners?
Yes, yes.
The money that funds the parade, yeah, okay.
I think where we are is we either stop doing it, or we clarify the language in the policy. We don't just keep doing it the way we're doing it.
We can't, I don't think we can stop doing it, for two reasons, we paid all the money for those fancy poles, and then you're gonna have these two green pegs sticking out of every one of them, secondly, it's a revenue source for the parade. So I think we have to have Paul figure out how to design it so that we can allow it.
That wasn't the original flag, the flag rule, though, right? I mean, the original flag rule was only pertaining to the three foot, what, the American flag, the state flag, and the...
Town, yeah.
The president or what.
POW, yeah.
But before, that was, that policy came into place before the recent Supreme Court decision, which includes a very expansive discussion of what constitutes a flag.
But we're not trying to stop, are we, are we trying to stop other things being put up, you know, on the side? I mean, I'm just talking about with the major flags, with the flags, the American flag has flown with the town flag and the president or what flag. I'm not talking about, I mean, the other stuff, it's been going on for years, right?
It has, but what, I think what Attorney Haverty is saying is now those actually qualify under the definition, legal definition of a flag, so that's why we have to address it specifically.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I agree with you on that.
All right, so...
Yeah, I think we should have him take a shot, draft it.
Okay, so now the second question is, the request for the Pride Month bunting's, specifically we have to respond to, and whether there's any larger discussion around that with other potential requests? potential requests that come in.
Well, I think as Paul Haverty said, according to the Supreme Court decision, bountings equals flags.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only information we have today. It's the interpretation of what Paul sent out to us, so.
So Pat, you're saying you're not inclined to make exceptions?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Not today.
Yeah. Ken?
I'm not inclined to make exceptions. And I also don't think it's right for us to say to the Parade Committee who sells those banners, "We're going to now tack something onto your banner that you've already collected money from families around town and sold it," you know?
Okay. And George, you already said-
You know, I've stated what I felt, but-
So you're not inclined to make an exception?
No, I'm not.
Okay. And I'm not either. Is it possible to have the other language drafted by like our, into our June 6 meeting?
I don't see what-
Knowing that they're going to start going up before-
Although they'll be hung this week, because they're always up for Memorial Day.
Well, I know, I just, I'd like to catch up with it sooner rather than later.
I agree with that.
Okay.
So do we want to vote for the bunting?
Yes. Why don't we take a vote?
How do you want me to make this motion? You want it in the firmer vote?
It doesn't, either way.
Make it something you would vote for.
Okay, so I would make a motion not to change, all right, so I would make a motion not to allow the bountings to be displayed from the Parade Committee, underneath the Parade Committee banners around town.
Do we have a second? These are the pride bountings.
A second motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
I have no problem with Paul trying to come up with-
We don't have public discussion on this agenda item. Okay. Paul, you want to go on to the next one?
Yeah, just two quick things under my report. The first one has to do with the fiscal year 2023 state operating budget earmarks for Chelmsford. The Senate is taking up its version of the state budget this week, following the action that we had in the House last month and discussion we had with the board earlier this month. I reached out to Senator Barrett's office and presented the two earmarks for Varney Playground and for the Chelmsford Center for the Arts. As you can see in the response that I received on May 17th, which was following a telephone discussion that I had with the Senator's office a few days prior, they submitted the one amendment for $100,000 for the Chelmsford Center for the Arts. I think what attracted the Senator's attention was not so much the Center for the Arts, but the idea of supporting and the center, but also the idea that it was, you know, could provide for energy efficiencies and so forth. And I asked a question about carbon neutral and that, so I haven't seen the actual language itself, but it may go to the point that they didn't want their, they wanted to make sure that the money that the Senator was supporting would support for carbon neutral or carbon reducing investments and so forth. So we will see what comes out of the Senate Budget Amendments later this week. And then, as we know from there, it goes to a conference committee, so we should know certainly by July where things stand in terms of the earmarks. And then the second one was, is we did receive notice from the Governor's Administration that the Town of Chelmsford has been awarded a Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Incentive Program Direct Current Fast Charging Grant in the amount of $84,152. And this will provide two rapid charging vehicles, electric vehicles, charging stations at the Chelmsford Forum. And to answer the question, why that location and why the electric thing is, they, in the grant location, it explicitly identified locations or search for locations that were near, you know, transportation routes and interchanges. And obviously, the Forum was the best one that we qualified for, because the Forum is right off of Route 3 at 129. And so we, our funding was awarded for that, because obviously, we could think of other locations in town, you know, aside from the ones that we already have at the library, this building, Vinyl Square and so, you know, DPW and Senior Center and so forth. So again, we're pleased to get that grant award, and we'll be working in the weeks ahead to have that installed with power at the Forum. So that concludes my report for this evening. I do have two appointments for your confirmation, both for the Council on Aging. And these committees come with the blessing and review by the Council on Aging, and that's for Carol Hunt for a term expiring June 30th, 2024, and for Peter Drew for a term expiring June 30th, 2023, to the Council on Aging.
Any questions?
Want them individually or is one? I'll, I will make a motion to approve Carol Hunt to a three-year term expiring 6/30/2024 for the Council on Aging, and Peter Drew for an unexpired three-year term expiring June 30th, 2023, to the Council on Aging.
I second that motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for the people. Donate their time.
Yes, that's great.
We're really getting our open list down.
Next meeting, you'll have your annual appointment, so it might pop back up again.
So now we're at liaison reports. Mark, do you have any?
Just a quick one. There's going to be some work that's starting on tomorrow, I think tomorrow and Wednesday, at the Friendship Park, where they're going to be digging up around the trees to try to straighten that situation out down there. So I believe the park is going to be closed. Is that right, Paul?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's it.
George?
I'm set.
Ken?
I'm good.
Yeah.
Yeah, a few things. Business development has been very busy since our last meeting. I've attended four ribbon cuttings in the past two weeks. The first was the Surgery Center of Merrimack Valley, which is located up in North Chelmsford. They collaborate with Lowell General Hospital and Shields MRI. They do outpatient surgeries, including knee and joint, other joint replacements, outpatient and cosmetic surgery, that you can go in and have your surgery done in 30 to 45 minutes and do your physical therapy there for a couple hours and go home that afternoon. So that's pretty amazing. I think it's a wonderful new facility up there. Next was the Outdoor Pride, which is a landscape and snow management company. They provide snow removal and landscape functions for large areas like parking lots and malls. And I want to also thank them for making donations to four local nonprofits, including the Farmer's Market on the Common, the Food Pantry, and Habitat for Humanity. Next was Mexican Chili, which is a new restaurant on Littleton Road. They have excellent Mexican food. Stop by if you have a chance. They make really good tacos. And last one was Allstate Insurance. Under new ownership on Parkhurst Road, they cover all your insurance needs. And a couple of things happening at the library. As I've mentioned before, this Thursday, our one book author, Ocean Wong, will be there Thursday at 7:00 PM via Zoom. So you do need to register and get a Zoom link for that presentation. And there will be a book sale on June 10th and 11th in the gym behind town offices. First time the library has been able to have one of the old-fashioned book sales in several years. So hopefully, that will be a big success.
Great. Thank you, Pat. I just have a couple from the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee. In addition to the Memorial Day Parade, which Regina already covered during this meeting, on June 1st, they will be having a virtual meeting at 7:00 PM, and anyone's welcome to attend that. And on June 8th, there will be a Varney Neighborhood Meeting at 6:30 PM, and they're meeting at the Bath House. The North Chelmsford Water District would like the public to know that the work for the water main upgrade on Groton Road was awarded on May 18th, but because of the material shortage issues across the country, it's likely that that upgrade won't be executed until the spring of 2023. And then, as mentioned at the last Select Board meeting, the North Chelmsford Water Department did a complete carbon, activated carbon replacement on their filters, and they have gotten their PFAS detected levels down to zero. So again, I thank them for that. And with that, I will take a motion. It is 7:59 PM.
I will make a motion to adjourn the executive session, not to return, and we will be discussing strategy with respect to litigation on the Second Ave appeal, strategy with respect to litigation on PFAS impact on the North Chelmsford Water District wells, considered to the purchase of real property at One Bell Rucker Road, also known as 44 Central Square, and strategy with respect to the collective bargaining units in the town.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call. Pat?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I vote aye.